And we're live.
Five, four, three, two, one. Committee on Legislation, Tuesday, December 1st, 2020. Councilmember Farrelotto.
Here.
Councilmember Glandbach.
Here.
Councilmember Nowakowski.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera. Councilmember Scanlon.
Present.
Council President Pridgen.
Here.
Councilmember Bowman.
Present.
Councilmember Wingo.
Present.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Here.
Quorum is present.
From the top.
Item number one, food store license, 1069 Broadway.
Items open?
This item is open. Before we open this and start talking about the other items, I just want to remind everyone who's here for the Legislation Committee, we have a three-minute speaking rule. So when you speak on an item, you will be limited to three minutes so we can get through the entire agenda and afford everyone an opportunity to speak. So I appreciate everyone for adhering to that. That being said, is there anyone here to speak on item number one?
Mr. Chair, can you please table this right now? I have spoken with the applicant and met at the store. He does know what the applicant knows what he needs to do in order to go through this process and addressing some of the concerns like facade windows, security cameras, and stuff that will make the store safe. So this will be tabled until I see those up.
Table.
Motion to table seconded by Councilmember Nowakowski.
Item number two, food store license, 1350 Fillmore.
Items open.
This item is open and in the Eloquent District, 1350 Fillmore Avenue, I believe. Is there anyone here to speak on this item? Since there is not, I will refer, I will defer to the Council President who has a nice matching holiday tie and pocket square on.
I think somebody's on, Mr. Chair.
Yes. I was muted. I'm sorry. How are you? Yes, I'm the owner of the facility. Is there anything that you have any specific questions or I don't know what?
Yeah, if you can just give us a quick, a quick overview of what you're putting there, what is there, what your business is doing, and then the Council President may have some follow-up questions.
Beautiful. So before there, I think there's multiple businesses that try to make this place successful. It wasn't happening. I purchased this from this place called Halal, By Halal Fresh, that was already existing supermarket and a carryout restaurant that was already licensed. So I purchased their license, the whole company, the whole business from them, acquired the whole company. So what I did is now I came with the concept where I want to be able to serve the community and have fresh vegetables, no alcohol, no cigarettes, no lottery, geared only towards a high Tops type of supermarket with all the latest technology, latest fridge. I've already upgraded my fridges, all the latest equipment that Tops uses. So it's going to be a Tops type of supermarket, but it's going to be for the local public, for the Eloquent District. And I was more geared, I'm going to be more geared towards fruits and vegetables where that's where we're lacking in our community in that section and which is more in the health sector. So realistically, it's same existing supermarket, same existing licensing. I just want to have it now in my company instead of it being in By Halal Fresh. Now I want it in Fillmore Supermarket, Fillmore Halal Supermarket. Which sums it up quick as much as.
Thank you. Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You said you purchased the license. What license did you purchase?
Actually, I purchased a company which they were already running an operational business. So I pretty much took their business and I purchased it, which was By Halal Fresh. Everything that they owned and operated, instead of me operating with that license, I shut it down. Number one, because of COVID. Number two, I wanted to do it the right way and have everything redone properly. So.
Let me ask Corporation Council, just so that I'm correct, and I don't know, Karen, Ms. Gordon, can you hear me? I see Corporation.
Yes, I can. Yes.
The applicant just said they purchased the license. Can a business purchase a city license to do business from another business?
Assistant Corporation comes to Karen Gordon. So I do not believe so. That's not the way it works. And he might be describing what the transaction that took place incorrectly. It could be since the store that he's speaking about sounds like a store that may have had what we call a special use permit. And if that's the case, and it had a special use permit, he may have purchased the business from the individual. If he purchased the business from the individual and the business did not cease from continuation of from operation, then he would be able to operate the business. But remember, under a special use permit, if you cease operation for more than 12 months, then you have to reapply for that permit. So he cannot purchase a city license from an individual, but he could have purchased the property which already had a special use permit to operate. So he might be describing what he did a little bit inaccurately. Um, so that's my assumption based on what I've heard so far.
She's correct.
So, okay, good. Has, has this property been closed for more than a year?
No, sir.
Because it's under a special. So Ms. Gordon, so it would be eligible to continue operating under the special use permit?
Correct.
All right. So sir, you don't have a license yet to operate the business in the city of Buffalo. I'm always concerned when a store owner puts in this much money without having a license because your license is not guaranteed. This council doesn't just have to give you a license to operate. We see this a lot. We warn people not to move forward, and that's why you come by the office or you get this stuff. We have to sign off on it. It then lets you know that it's not an automatic. I want to be clear, this store has had a lot of problems. There's a lot of drug dealing that goes on in the parking lot. It looks atrocious. I pass this place every single day. Garbage all against the store, garbage in the parking lot, cars parked there. It's bad. The neighbors in that neighborhood, the responsible neighbors, they, they really are against this store opening again. And so when I saw the work going on, and then yesterday or last week, when I saw a "opening soon" sign, something to that effect, I don't know what, 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 you need your license first. So you're saying you're going to open soon, but you don't even have a city license to operate. I'm not going to move this forward. I think you and I need to have some conversation. And do you have any other stores in the city of Buffalo?
No, I do. I did send you an email. I don't know if you had gotten my email describing all the questions and concerns you had. I don't know. Did you, did you see that email by any chance?
You haven't seen it. I got a person sitting right here who does the emails.
Okay.
You might want to just give me a call, give me a number to reach out to you. We can talk about it. But if you're going to open up this store, I'm all for business. I'm going to tell you that right now. I'm all for fresh fruits in that neighborhood because it's a, it's a fresh fruit desert. However, the promises of the farmer folks to put fresh fruit, it wasn't, it wasn't fresh at all.
No.
When I tell you it wasn't fresh at all, and this is what the people in that neighborhood had to eat, and I authorized license after license, I got promise after promise, and I got very little back for those folks over there in return. So I'm very concerned. It's not going to be an easy lift.
Right. If you come by what I've done.
We'll, we'll make an appointment.
Absolutely.
I won't hold up everybody else because there's a whole agenda. You can call the office. I'll come by, but I'm telling you, but I'm not going to, I'll tell you right now, because of my past with this store and every owner almost, that when we do, if we do authorize it, it will not be a full license before a certain amount of time to be able to look back and see if you're truly doing what you said you would do. And then if you don't, shut you down. Okay?
No.
We call up right to office. You can table this, Mr. Chair.
How do I set up a meeting with you?
Eight five one four nine eight oh. Eight five one four nine eight oh.
Okay.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Motion is to table seconded by Council President Pridgen. Next item.
Item number three, food store license, 1373, AKA 1381 Main.
This item is open. This is another item in the Eloquent District, 1373 Main Street, also known as 1381 Main Street. Is the applicant here to speak on this item?
They can table it.
Motion to table.
Seconded by Council President Pridgen.
Item number four, Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board Bailey Ave Resolution.
Items open.
This item is open. Do we have someone from the board who is here to speak on it? I see Justin Booth raising his hand. So, Justin, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, everyone, for taking the time this afternoon. I hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving. I'm here on behalf of, as Chair of the Council's Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board. Issues, traffic safety issues on Bailey Avenue have been brought to the attention of the board going back as far as October of 2019, where there was a vehicle that crashed into a business right after Main Street Improvement Grant had been spent to improve the facades there. Since then, there has been multiple fatalities and injuries and crashes on that street. There was a cyclist killed back in June. There was an elderly pedestrian that was hit later this fall. There's been a number of crashes where the jaws of life were needed to take people out of their vehicles on this corridor. So we know that the challenges, safety challenges on this corridor have been apparent, not only this year, but for many years. Looking back from 2014 to 2019, there have been 311 reported crashes with pedestrians and bicyclists, leading to 301 injuries and four fatalities along the roadway, with the Delvin Avenue intersection having the highest incidences of crashes. Work done by Councilmember Wyatt, the University District Community Development Association, and the Greater Buffalo Regional Transportation Council developed a plan back in 2018 that really identified one of the biggest challenges Bailey Avenue being speeding vehicles along the street and the safety concerns that, that, that it creates. The community has identified the lack of crosswalks and other street markings as some of the most glaring issues faced by residents and businesses along Bailey Avenue. And the, the board, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board put forth this resolution and passed this resolution unanimously, which is in front of you, with the goal to encourage this council to identify resources for the city to invest in interim improvements to slow vehicle speeds, prioritizing enhanced access to transit, improving walkability, and making cycling a safe and viable travel option for people in the community, as many people, over 30% of the households, don't even have access to a car. Post the necessary signage, and I, I would like to add that the Department of Public Works, who attend the BikePed Board meetings, have begun at least posting speed limit signs along the corridor, which were in compliance previously, and implement a progressive enforcement campaign aimed at educating drivers of the safety issues caused by speeding before issuing tickets. So I know that there's a number of community members and other board members on this call to discuss this issue. But you all have a copy of this resolution, and we certainly appreciate your attention to making sure that traffic safety is utmost concern, particularly in communities and corridors like Bailey Avenue that have had or have not been invested in in many years. So thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate those comments, and thank you for keeping it to three minutes. We'll have some other speakers, and then we'll go to the council member whose district it's in. I can see some faces that want to speak. Does someone want to, Jeremy Besh, I see your hand up. And so if you'd like to go, and then I, and then we'll call on, I see Jolanda wants to speak, and Lynn wants to speak, and then Todd. So Jeremy, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, everybody. I'm here today to talk on behalf of this resolution specifically in support of the kids who live along that corridor. You can see in the resolution that 26% of the population identified are school-aged children aged 17 and under. I am a lifelong school teacher and administrator, and I've worked in schools that are both in urban areas and that straddle them, and the importance of access to safe bike and pedestrian routes for kids is directly tied to all of the things that I've heard this council talk about as important parts of your work. It's a health and wellness initiative. It's an access to travel and transportation initiative. It's a wellness campaign. We know that communities where community members have access to cycling and pedestrian pathways that are safe and protected and understood as cycling and pedestrian pathways have less instances of health concerns, have greater attendance at a community events, including school, and have greater health outcomes over the long term. We also know that there's a happiness quotient attached to that. We've seen both nationally and internationally that communities that have physical activity and access to physical activity built into their infrastructure report populations that are happier than those that do not. Over the last decade or so, Western New York has done a really good job in terms of building and supporting this infrastructure, but it's tended to happen in places outside of the city. I grew up in University Heights, and as a kid, I rode up and down Bailey as I was visiting, visiting my friends' houses. And it's been a bad core for a long, long time. The resolution itself identifies some of the key areas that could be quick fixes in terms of signage and road postings and a general community awareness that those are thoroughfares for pedestrians and people on bikes. But I would posit to this group that this is really step one in a much broader, longer process that could put Buffalo in a leadership, leadership position, both regionally and nationally. We've seen walking and bike riding jump exponentially over the course of COVID-19, and this gives us a chance to put our city forward as one who takes care of its walkers and bikers, not just because it provides them with a better way of life, but also because it prevents them access to things outside of their immediate neighborhoods that they otherwise would not have. So from all of those standpoints, I'm here today to speak in support of this resolution.
All right. Thank you very much for your comments. Jolanda.
Good afternoon, everybody. So yeah, I'm here on behalf of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Board and also the Fair Fines and Fees Coalition, and I am very much in support of this resolution. So racist urban policies, racist urban policies in years of intentional investment from the Black community, and the reliance on police cameras, fines, and fees to promote traffic safety has created very violent and dilapidated streets. Streets, excuse me, like Bailey Avenue, and many times has been exploited under the guise of safety to balance the city of Buffalo's budget by way of tickets and over policing. Since 2014, four people have died walking and riding their bikes on Bailey Avenue. Can you imagine what the outrage would be if that was Elmwood Avenue? Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Somebody said I was breaking up. Okay. Can you imagine what the outrage would be if that was Elmwood Avenue? The people in the community have been crying out for years for improvements on Bailey Avenue, but still nothing has happened. And we're really just curious as to like what the holdup is. I look at areas like Elmwood and Bidwell Parkway, and I think, why can't streets on the east side be designed or redesigned in this way? The investment in Bailey's infrastructure is not only a traffic safety issue, but it is also a criminal justice issue. More police on the roads are not going to keep people safe. Instead, it puts people at risk of being excessively ticketed and being targeted by the police for minor traffic infractions. How does that keep the people in Buffalo safe? What it does do is it, it raises a lot of money for the city of Buffalo. And it doesn't create vibrant, vibrant streets or walkable streets or create safer roads. The data is clear. We must invest in Bailey Avenue. We must create streets that include traffic calming infrastructure. We must stop relying on the police cameras, fines, and fees to keep our roads safe, but we must get rid of the problem and really just invest in Bailey Avenue. There's too many lives at risk. And the way we're going about traffic safety right now is just not working. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments. Todd, are you here to comment on this?
Yes. Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for having me. I'm here on behalf of Eastside Bike Club. And I was born and raised on the east side in the University District. I now reside in that Lovejoy District. I ride my bike pretty much often, and on Bailey Avenue, it seems like it's just a like a death trap. There's no, there's no bike lanes. I often get cut off by cars turning from stop signs, ignoring, you know, the bicycle coming or, or whatever. I try to use a whistle to, you know, let them know. But I think, you know, bike lanes should be there just to remind motors that bicycles are entitled to the road as well. Like if I ride down Main Street, I notice there are like, there are signs that show you that, you know, bikes are able to ride through there. So when I'm riding on Main, I'm able to point, point that out to other cars. There's nothing like that on Bailey. I have been cut off to where I had to jump off my bike and roll off the curb, cars speeding. When you try to avoid Bailey, you find yourself going down Olympic or Suffolk, where it's even a more, even tighter, you know, situation, commuting back and forth. So I don't want to like take up too much time, but I believe we should have bike lanes to protect us.
Thank you very much for your comments. Lynn Magdo, are you still on the call?
I'm here, but my bandwidth is low, so I'll say really quickly that my brief statement was submitted to Dan Zelinsky and to Joel Farrelotto. One of the important issues is immediacy. There is a more long-term plan that the NFTA is working on with the GBNRTC. But the BikePed Board feels that something urgent and immediate needs to be done before there are more accidents. Another issue is equity, and that is that I live in the Delaware District, which is very bike-friendly. There's no reason why the rest of the city should not be as bike-friendly as my neighborhood. And finally, let me just say a personal thing, which is the first time I was ever on Bailey Avenue, not only did it remind me of my childhood in New York, which was a very nice homey feeling, but I was on a bus that was in an accident. So, you know, this is, this was quite a while ago, maybe 10 years ago. So this is a long time problem, and I am supporting the resolution as a member of the BikePed Board and as an active member of Citizens for Regional Transit.
Thank you very much for your comments. India Walton.
Good afternoon, everyone. India Walton here. I'm a resident of the Niagara District. This is relevant to me because I have a child who attends school at St. Augustine on Bailey and Hastings. And as a member of the Board of Slow Roll Buffalo, many times I've been on Bailey, and it's a hazardous situation. I think that I'm very fortunate to live in the Niagara District and see the transformation of the thoroughfare of Niagara Street and also Tonawanda. Tonawanda Street was recently repaved, and it was a drag strip, honestly. And one day I rolled down, and there was new striping, and it's beautiful. There are parking lanes. Traffic has been calmed. And furthermore, as a nurse, I'd like to just bring your attention to what is often called the curb cut effect, right? So we think that we're making cuts in the curb for folks who are differently able, maybe in, in wheelchairs, but we don't think oftentimes about how that affects moms pushing strollers. Many of you know my first introductions to council meetings was when we were interrupting to get infrastructure repaired as a result of an accident that happened on Moselle Street where a child unfortunately lost their lives because there were no sidewalks. So I think that infrastructure in this city, we have a responsibility to make it more equitable, and, and bike lanes are not only for bikers. It also is good for traffic safety. It's also good for pedestrian safety. It is also going to help us with our speeding in school zones situation and so many other benefits that we'll get with just some, some basic infrastructure and striping. So I am also in support of this resolution, and I hope that you all are as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Darren Cotton.
Hey, everyone. Thanks so much for the opportunity. My name's Darren Cotton. I live in University District and actually worked with Dominic and Laura over at Buffalo Paint and Wallpaper to pen that letter back in October 2019. So that was when I was working at the University District Community Development Association. We had got them a Main Street grant from the Buffalo Main Street Initiative. So just about two months after they received their reimbursement through that grant, they invested about $60,000 into their building at Bailey and Phyllis. A car drove straight into the facade that had just undergone renovation. So it was about another $20,000 to $30,000 of work that had to be done. And this was the third time within two years that their building had been struck. This was something that we were really trying to push from a small business standpoint, that these are small businesses who have been struggling for the past, you know, two, five, 10 years, finally getting an opportunity to invest in their businesses and having public infrastructure that really just doesn't meet the needs of community members, businesses, and people looking to shop these businesses. So we had requested in October of 2019 through a letter to the DPW for basic interim investments on Bailey Avenue, including center lines, demarcating the middle of Bailey Avenue, parking lines, demarcating what are travel and what are parking lanes, pedestrian crosswalks at lights, operational pedestrian push buttons, and stop lines at all signaled intersections. As far as I know, none of those interim steps have been taken. And I would, again, just echo everything that has already been said, and that we really need to work towards public infrastructure, the most basic of public infrastructure that meets the needs of people who are living in the community and not people who are just driving through. So thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Housekeeping items. First of all, in the, in the future, this is directed towards our Chief of Staff. When the Bike and Pedestrian Board is lining up speakers to speak on a specific resolution that has to do with infrastructure, we should have the Commissioner of Public Works at that meeting because I know through capital funding and the capital, a lot of the capital budget projects are addressed, and a lot of the things that are being requested right now are through the Department of Public Works, and they should be here to hear this and to speak to that. So in the future, let's do that. But I appreciate everyone's comments and everyone addressing the council and bringing up some very good concerns. Before we move on to the next item, Councilmember Wyatt, do you have any?
Yeah. At first, I want to thank the Advisory Board and all those who spoke. I think many of you know I've been a huge advocate for a lot of the things that you've talked about, especially as it relates to traffic designs and striping and that. I've sent a number of letters to Public Works, and as some of you have said, we have not seen those things happen. I think a number of my colleagues have partnered with me to ask for those things as well. But it would have been nice for Public Works to hear this conversation because this is real. There's a lot of things that we would like to do immediately, but that, to me, is a basic thing. I mean, there's areas where there's no crosswalk. There's no center line. Those things are really important. I know we just recently ended passing of the, the legislation regarding the school zone cameras. There will be some additional things that are going to happen regarding that. Councilmember Nowakowski has also put forth the resolution for us, some of those funds to be used for speed humps and other things. So we definitely are, this council has been very vocal towards what you're speaking on. I know right now Bailey is in the process of being evaluated for, they host new street design. Before COVID, we had a number of meetings with the community, and we want to continue those conversations with GNRC, GNRC as well as NFTA. So that is on the way. Some of the things that you said as far as the, the disinvestment in Bailey are very, very true. I've heard it from a lot of folks in my district. I've heard it from a lot of folks in my district. Um, so it is on the way. It's, it's a slower process than we would like. Um, but we certainly will like, well, next time we have a public meeting to have your input. I know Nina Zensky from my office has been leading the effort, working with Public Works to get this information out because um, we want to have um, this design done, but not just with their focus, but with the community focus. Um, so many of the things that you address, we are addressing um, in this new design, and we're hopeful that this will happen in the next two to three years. It's not a quick process. Um, I wish we could, we could say it's gonna happen next year. Um, but I think the most immediate thing is at least to get the striping and things done. Um, I know Mr. Johnson, George Johnson, has contacted me numerous times um, regarding some of the things that he's um, dealt with, because he lives right there on Bailey. So we understand. I hear you loud and clear, and we want to see some things done. So again, I appreciate you all coming forth. And um, we certainly like to have that information provided to Public Works to try to get something done most immediately. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Golumbeck, then Councilmember Bowman.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if there's still people that want to speak, I'd like, I'll speak when they're done.
Okay, Councilmember Bowman, I know you wanted to speak. You can go ahead.
I'll just go real, real quickly and just say that I'm very supportive of this uh, resolution. On Bailey, actually, uh, Councilmember Wyatt mentioned it, but George Johnson is a representative over there in Delavan and Bailey. Every time there's an accident, he calls me at what time of day and night, and it's, it's a lot. It's frequent, very dangerous. I volunteered at Gerard Place, and just getting across Bailey over there to get to my truck is a tough task. So it's very important we make this a priority. And I needed to come all the way through my district, not just Bailey and Delavan. There's accidents recently at Bailey and Lovejoy. Um, Ms. Goody's at Bailey and Walden, her building has hit, been hit several times. So uh, it's, it's a priority. I'd like to see this happen faster. I know there are funds uh, potentially allocated, but uh, I certainly support this and want to see it happen fast. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Ed Parker? Did, are you still on the line and did you want to speak? Ed Parker? Okay, any other speakers on this item?
George, George Johnson, uh, I could take Ed's place.
Go ahead, George.
Uh, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to be able to speak to the council pertaining to this, and this has been a pressing issue for some time. I am the President of Buffalo United Front and also uh, the leader of Eastside Bike Club. We, 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 we just want to focus on the importance of making this, making this corner, making this strip as safe as possible uh, in terms of of, of the residents especially, because there's a lot of data that was put in, but there's a lot of data that wasn't put in because everybody don't report everything that goes on on that corner. The corner is a very dangerous corner, and since some changes has been made on that corner, it's urgent that we uh, address it uh, uh, big time because of the fact that now you have Demostus on the corner, you have the Gerard Place, and you also have the Buffalo Promise Neighborhood School. God forbid if anything would happen to any of those residents in terms of, especially the kids. So we gotta make it safe. We gotta make it safe. We gotta make it safe. Uh, and I live right there on that corner, and I see a lot of stuff that's happening, and I'm working my butt off to try to make it as safe as I possibly can. So I fully support this resolution, and I hope that everybody will come on board, and let's do what's necessary to make the residents of our city safe, because I am in between all three districts in terms of university, uh, uh, Lovejoy and Maston, and I'm up and down that strip constantly. Uh, and, and, and we just gotta make it safer, because I truly believe that the residents, uh, all the residents in that area especially fully support this resolution in terms of what needs to be done.
Thank you.
So thank you, thank you for that time.
Donna Stepien? I think, if you can unmute yourself. If you can't unmute yourself, you can email us some comments. There we go, okay.
I'm unmuted. Um, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Um, in the early 1990s, I lived in the Parkside area right on Amherst Street, and I worked in um, the town of Amherst, and I would try to ride my bike as frequently as possible. I was on Bailey quite a bit, and um, the situation for a biker was very bad back then. Fast forward, I moved away from Buffalo for 18 years. I returned back four years ago. Now, my husband, um, I'm a lot older now. Uh, my husband works in the um, Walden Bailey neighborhood. I'm at Walden and Bailey and on Bailey quite a bit now, not on my bike, but usually in a car, because we own one car. I drop him off at work. I often have a child in the car with me, one of my grandchildren. I'm always on Bailey. I see how nothing has changed. And I think close to 30 years is an awful long time to wait. There are other cities that have made changes. I can think of a city that I had recently lived in, which within four or five years have made, has made significant changes for pedestrian and bike infrastructure. For Buffalo to say that we're still waiting, I think is unconscionable, and I really s- support the bicycle and pedestrian board um, proposition, and I think that it is something that should not be thought about. We should start doing striping. We should start doing curb cuts. We should start doing real bike lanes, not just a stripe on the street, but the kind of bike lanes that are being put into the infrastructure of other cities, and we should begin immediately. Thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you very much. I believe everyone who wants to speak has spoke, with the exception of Councilmember Golumbeck. So Councilmember Golumbeck, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. Um, I want to say hello to Donna and Ignacio. They're my constituents. I'm glad that they're here. Um, I want to talk about a couple of things. Before Farrelotto and uh, Wingo were the bike-riding guys on the council, it was me. Um, never rode as much as you guys uh, do now, but I still ride a little bit, and biking was always very, very important to me. Now, some of you have heard the story before, but you know, every summer pre-COVID, I would spend a week in Montreal and a week in Quebec City, and I remember being there in the hmm, mid 90s, I believe. And you know, they had by this point on bike routes that were designated, not just stripes, but that were designated as bike lanes with a little curbing there. I think they were like four feet, six feet wide. I can't remember exactly. Um, but I really, really, you know, liked those, and after I got elected on the council, I would constantly bring up to Commissioner Giambra and then Commissioner Stepniak and Commissioner Finn that I thought that this was the direction that we had to go in the city of Buffalo. I remember one time, uh, oh, maybe about eight years ago, when I was at the Montreal City Hall, I was talking to one of the police officers that worked there, and he was explaining to me that these bike routes went in, and I think he said the mid 1980s, late 1980s, and that everybody said, "Oh, my gosh, this is crazy. You know, why are we doing this? This is Montreal. We're on a mountain. Um, it's cold, freezing half of the year. Nobody rides their bikes." Sound familiar? You know, these are the same complaints that people have in Buffalo about uh, biking. And he told me that by, you know, 2012 or whatever year it was when I was talking to him, that I believe that during the summer, they had uh, double digits, like 12 or 14%, can't remember the exact number that he gave me, but they had that much, that high of a percentage of people who worked in downtown Montreal uh, riding their bikes. And I was amazed that uh, when I would be out walking about, uh, you know, the bike paths would be used during the day as I was walking, but roughly from four to six o'clock, it was almost non-stop, the number of people. Um, I asked him about winter, and he said, "Well, believe it or not," he goes, I, I think he said, "Four to 6% of people still ride their bikes in the wintertime." Um, in the, uh, in that city as well. Well, let's flash over to the city of Buffalo. Um, Niagara Street, the state project that's being done in sequences, um, is uh, in the process of coming into the North District. Um, the bike path is uh, partially being moved onto Niagara Street, and one of the things that was near and dear to my heart was having um, uh, designated bike lanes for bicyclists, especially on busy streets like Niagara Street. Um, you know, they're putting them in, and I have to tell you, for those of you that are upset that things are not moving fast enough, I'm, I'm sympathetic with you. I've brought this up at my black clubs in my district, and people generally think that, you know, it's not a good idea. Um, quite honestly, uh, they don't understand the importance of biking. Uh, they don't understand the importance of separate bike lanes. Um, there's still a automobile mentality among a lot of people, and I spend a lot of time at the black clubs trying to explain the importance, telling the Montreal story. You know, it's cold in Buffalo. It's colder in Montreal. Um, you know, we're not on a mountain in Buffalo. So I think given the opportunity, more and more people would ride bikes. So I was very, very happy. I believe that uh, the Niagara project is the first project, at least in the North District, that's actually going to have a separate bike lane with a curb that's gonna keep uh, bicyclists uh, separate and much more protected um, from automobiles, and that's exceptionally important. Um, and you know, I hope that eventually this happens throughout the rest of the city of Buffalo, because I think that will encourage more people to ride bikes, and as more people uh, as there are more safer routes uh, in the city of Buffalo, I think more people will ride their bikes. I can make it from my house. If I leave my house at like nine in the morning, I can literally be in my office just after 9:30. Um, and that's without hoofing it, you know, uh, taking some side streets down the west side of Buffalo. Um, and I take the side streets because I want to be more careful. I'm always much more nervous on streets like um, Niagara. Um, you know, I want to share also that uh, I want to thank India Walton for mentioning Tonawanda Street. Um, that rebuild was something that I had been pushing for, for several years, and I encouraged, I used to encourage Commissioner Stepniak, and then, and at that point, the city engineer Mike Finn, who's now the Commissioner. Um, I said, "Look, I need bike paths on Tonawanda," and they promised me, uh, and especially Commissioner Finn, that the bike paths would be put in there because of the uh, uh, bicycle group and so on and so forth. Um, but I have made sure that I have been an advocate, you know, for the biking community, and a little bit of it is selfishness, because as I said, I do ride my bike uh, uh, often. But also because I think it's good for the city of Buffalo. I think it's good for the creative class. I think it's good for pedestrians. I think it's good for people to understand that, you know, cities are not made for cars. It's such a complex situation. But we have a lot of issues still in North where people don't pay as close attention um, as they should. So I will continue to work with Commissioner Finn. I will continue to advocate, and I will continue to push and strive to get dollars to be put into these extra little lanes that we are going to have uh, hopefully in all of our districts. And I want to make Buffalo a much more friend, bike-friendly place than it currently is. Um, so I want to commend uh, Justin and uh, everybody here for their positions, and the last thing. Um, somebody asked, you know, "How come it's not being done in certain neighborhoods?" You know, you have to help us and be our partners. You have to be at a black club, and when people roll their eyes, I mean, once again, I, I've been at black clubs where I said that I wanted to have these uh, separate uh, bike lanes, and people thought it was a phenomenal waste of money, that it was ridiculous. You know, we need people at the black clubs to speak out for pedestrians and to speak out for bicyclists. Um, we can't just do it on our own, you know, and if we do, then it's like, "Oh, you know, you're being an elitist. You're a, you're doing this without public support." No, I believe there is public support there, but we need, you know, we need the help of all of you guys who are here at this meeting, but we also need it whether it's North or University or Delaware. We need to come to black clubs, you know, and be vocal and be supportive and help educate people so that they know the importance of a walkable, of, of, of bicycle-friendly city. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Golumbeck. Um, we are going to wrap it up with comments from Councilmember Wingo.
I'll be very, very brief. Um, I just want to say that uh, you don't, you, you don't realize how, how important it is for the bike lanes to be respected until you start riding your bike. You don't, you don't really, uh, you can't really appreciate uh, the walkability of the city until you have to walk. As long as people are in their cars, uh, there's gonna be a disregard for bikers and, and pedestrians and runners, joggers, and things like that, because I, I have to commend Public Works when they repaved Fillmore Avenue. Uh, they put in a very vibrant, clear, marked bike lane, and it's also a school zone. And you'd be amazed, because I, I, I've been biking this year, you'd be amazed at how many people that I've noticed, because I'm a biker, who actually disregard that bike lane and drive in the bike lane. So there's gonna have to be a lot more than just marking on the streets. There's gonna be have to be something else incorporated to ensure that folks are actually following those markings on the street. Because if there had been anyone in the bike lane when this car had zoomed around me in a school zone, that person would have gotten ran right out right over. So I appreciate all of the comments that I were able to hear, that I was able to hear. I appreciate the effort of the association. Uh, I rode with Justin, and I mean, his average speed is about 20 miles an hour. I'm not doing that ever again. So Joe, if Justin ever asks you to go riding, be prepared to ride about 20 miles an hour. No, no, thank you. But for the most part, people are not looking for bicyclists, and what we have to do is ensure that uh, more than just putting down the, the markings in the, on the streets, we have to help motorists uh, be more cognizant that they're, uh, make sure that they're aware that there are other folks that are utilizing these roads, and I'm, and I, and I'll end my comments there, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. We're gonna wrap up, but Councilmember Noakowski would like to add some more comments. So Councilmember Noakowski, you have the floor.
I will be brief. It's uh, refreshing, and I, I'm glad to see all of my colleagues support added infrastructure like bike lanes and traffic safety and overlays. I think that um, I found a lot of kindred spirits in the council now that will probably join me with um, better than, you know, what better money to use is than the money from, generated from speed zone cameras to be reinvested in our neighborhoods. So I look forward to this uh, continuing uh, throughout the, the week.
All right. Thank you very much, everyone, for your comments on it. Um, motion, do you have a motion?
Uh, what would you like to do with this item?
Should we table it to keep it in committee, so then the Commissioner of Public Works could speak on it? Is that, okay. Motion is to table, seconded by Councilmember Noakowski.
Item number five, school zone and traffic concerns.
Item's open?
This item is open. This was a letter that was submitted by, I believe, Jen Tuttle from the Wind spear.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think she's here, but um, her sentiments kind of speak to the issues that we're talking about right now in this fire. It's just signage, beacons, I mean, especially as this relates to the school zone um, cameras, because a lot of folks in that area have gotten tickets, because when they come off of West Wind Spear, um, they get these tickets because they weren't alerted that there was a school zone camera. So what we've asked for as far as the legislation speaks to those issues, so hopefully those things will be addressed. I know um, during our Finance Committee meeting, Donna said that they have been addressing them. They aren't quite done with the signage and the additional beacons as of yet, um, but they are working on it as we speak.
Thank you. Uh, be tabling or receiving and filing this item?
We can table.
Okay.
Motion to table.
Seconded by President Protemp Scanlon.
Item number six, special instrument 743 hurdle for light industrial.
Looks like there's a motion to table. Is that the motion?
Uh, Senator Farrelotto?
Yes, Councilmember Golumbeck.
Yeah, there's a public hearing in two weeks, so yeah, the motion would be to table.
Okay. All right, so the public hearing is going to be held on December 15th, and right now, motion is to table, seconded by-
Yeah, and if they could change that on the, um, it says public hearing on 11/15. I'm sure it's just a typo.
Okay, public hearing is on 12/15. Motion to table, seconded by Councilmember Golumbeck. Next item.
Item number seven, special instrument 239 Lombard.
Motion to table, items seven and eight.
Seconded by Councilmember Golumbeck. Seconded by Councilmember Golumbeck.
No further items. Motion to adjourn.
I believe Councilmember Noakowski wanted to take number nine, 13 off the table.
Motion is to take items nine and 13 from the table.
Okay. Seconded by Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first item is a food store license at 671 Fillmore Avenue. I'm making a motion to deny, and I'm stating these records for the record. This license and application is inconsistent with the Unified Development Ordinance approval standards, standard stated within 11.3.3 Section E. The first, the proposed use is inconsistent with the spirit and intent of the UDO and the comprehensive plan. The second is the proposed use will endanger the public health, safety, and welfare of the adjacent area. And three, the proposed use established is inconsistent with the surrounding area and impede the development, use, and enjoyment of the adjacent properties in a foreseeable manner. Four, the proposed use will be out of character. That will produce noise, odors, vibration that will adversely affect the surrounding area. So motion is to deny item number nine.
Motion is to deny.
Seconded by Councilmember Golumbeck.
Item 13, food store license 904 Broadway.
Item's open.
This is another food store license that I will be making a motion to deny, and the standards for denial are stated within the Unified Development Ordinance approval standards, standard stated within 11.3.3 Section E. And as I stated to the previous denial, there are items one through four, and can be found within the UDO. So motion is denied. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to deny.
Seconded by Councilmember Scanlon.
Motion to table.
Seconded by Council President Pridgen.